Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice to all.
Welcome, and seeing that we have a council member that is attending, we assume we will, council, be doing roll call for moving forward for votes. So please indicate your presence, council member Beck. Council member House. Council member Lawrence? Council member Leifeld?
Here.
Council member Pembel?
Here.
Council member Verachov?
Absent, just kidding, I'm just trying to keep everybody on.
All right, thank you, council members. Let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. This evening, we have a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, and council member Pembel, would you please start?
Whereas the city of Hastings declares Friday, April 18th, as Arbor Day, and?
Whereas the city of Hastings has celebrated Arbor Day since 1997, planting trees in different parks and spaces identified by the city forester, and?
Whereas the purpose of Arbor Day is to encourage and educate Hastings residents in tree planting, developing civic pride and a sense of community, and?
Whereas Arbor Day 2025 will be held at Lake Isabel Park Friday, April 18th, from 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., where 12 to 13 trees will be planted, mulched, and watered, and?
Whereas Arbor Day 2025 is partially sponsored by Dakota Electric Association and Hoffman and McNamara, and the city of Hastings is appreciative of these civic-minded groups to help make this event possible, and?
Whereas the city of Hastings has been recognized as a Tree City USA community by the National Arbor Day Foundation since 1997, celebrating 28 years, and?
Now therefore be resolved that I, mayor of the city of Hastings, do hereby claim April 18th as Arbor Day in Hastings. We adopted this tonight, so Arbor Day is always a great event. If you help want to join in planting some trees, please join us at Lake Isabel Park on the 18th of April. Thank you, council. Tonight, we have a recognition of an outgoing planning commissioner, Chris Tyken, and with us tonight, we will have John Hensman with this little introduction and followed by conversation.
All right, thank you, mayor, council members. As the mayor and council know, we have tremendous volunteers within our city that help out our advisory commissions, and when the service of these individuals often comes without a lot of recognition. They work a lot behind the scenes on things that the council ultimately will work on and pass. Planning Commission is a very important commission. They take a look at all of the land use, zoning, new development that goes through. There's a number of public hearings that take place at those commissions as well, so it's a touch point for people to talk about projects and perhaps question projects. So the Planning Commission sometimes has some tough jobs to do. Over the last few years, we've had a lot of great developments that have taken place, and over the last few years, we've had a tremendous planning commissioner, Chris Tyken, that has helped us out in doing that. Chris has been serving on the commission since the beginning of 2021, and you can imagine the different projects that have happened since that timeframe we've had. Lake Isabel Flats project downtown, we've had the current 33 project, we've had the completion of Confluence, we've gone through ordinance amendments, there's been a lot of different things that we've been involved in. Chris has come forward with a lot of great experience. He's kind of a planning commission junkie in some ways. He's served in this capacity in various other commissions and various other cities, so it was great for him to be able to bring some context from other places into what we're doing here today. Chris has moved out of the city, has to step off of the planning commission. We're sad to see that, but we're very thankful for all the work, the dedication, and the thoughtfulness that you've put in here, plus the many hours that you've put in on a Monday night away from your families. So I do have a certificate here of appreciation for Chris, if you want to come on up here.
Thank you so much for all you've done, wish you best in the future. Thank you. I hope I left the city a little better than I got. Yes, absolutely. That's my job, so thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, for your years of service, and we wish you well to wherever you're moving, and maybe you'll join a planning commission there.
Thank you. Wrong one, that one.
All right, tonight, we have a presentation from Dakota County Historical Society, the Laduke Historic Estates. We have with us Matt Carter and Ryan Kucha.
Kucha. Kucha. Okay. It's a hard one.
And they will give us an update on our historic Laduke in our city. Welcome.
Excellent, thank you for having us. So again, my name's Matt Carter, I'm executive director at the Dakota County Historical Society, and we operate three sites within Dakota County, the Laduka State here in Hastings, the Lasha Museum in South St. Paul, and the Sibley Historic Site in Mendota. And so we'll just do a quick update here on the last year. We tried to do an annual update as we end one calendar year and turn into the next, so we are doing our update here for you. So again, in your council packet, you did receive an updated end-of-the-year fiscal 2024 estimate for the year-end. This is all pending our final CPA and audit, so those are the estimated year-end numbers and then our budgeted 2025 numbers for moving forward. So we do want to thank the city of Hastings, city council, for the opportunity to utilize community investment funds at the Laduka State. So since that was offered as an option or an opportunity, we've been very fortunate to be able to utilize those funds to do a number of upgrades and some upkeep to the site itself. So one of the things that we've done is the new vinyl fence that's along the backside of the property. We added a new shed that expands on the size of the previous shed and is utilized very well by our garden volunteers. We were able to replace the chicken coop roof, so that had been leaking, so we were able to replace that. We were able to put in some new exhibits that will be at the site itself, utilizing the Simmons shed that's on the grounds as well as interior, and then updates and some upgrades to our collection area, which is new to the site, and I'll let Ryan kind of talk about that.
Yeah, so in August 1st of last year, the site and Lasha, the other museum that DCHS runs, received over 1,600 artifacts from MNHS. So these artifacts were in the house during Carol Simmons' tenure on the property, so this includes furniture, clothing, other small objects. We have a couple photos here of the chest plate that William wore during the Civil War, as well as some art that Alice created for her company, the Hastings Sewing Company, and a chest that Florence Laduke used to travel to visit her brother in Washington, DC. So we use those CIF funds to help buy materials to properly care for these artifacts.
Yeah, and to go off of that, too, with this round of the CIF funds, we're looking at getting a custom-made display case where we'll be able to have the Laduke body armor on display permanently in the house itself. It'll be able to move around, but that's one of the pieces that is highly unique and always a favorite of those that come into the site, especially now that we're able to have that on display. The other thing I'll update on is the George Daniels Project. So this is a new exhibit that we are working on within the Carriage Barn. And so anyone that is familiar with the site, George Daniels was a former slave, and eventually he met William Laduke while William was quartermaster for the Union Army, and they struck up a relationship. William hired George to bring his own personal belongings back to Hastings, and then George lived on the site and worked on the site for the Laduke, excuse me, the Laduke family. And eventually, George married Chloe, they started their family, and then homesteaded in White, South Dakota. So this exhibit here will be looking, so if you're facing the Carriage Barn, the far-left section here, you'll come in through that entryway, you'll get introduced to George, and then eventually meet Chloe, and you follow through the Carriage Barn itself, and you meet the rest of the Daniels family and their time as they were homesteading in South Dakota, and then it shifts into exploring the African-American community here in Hastings. So as you exit to the far-right side, you'll meet and learn about the Hastings community, and then as you exit to the far-right there, that's where we'll have some information on the African-American history as it portra, or pertains to the rest of Minnesota as well as Hastings and the region. Tying in with that, we had a partnership grant where we worked with Building Remembrance for Reconciliation to create a concept plan for what a Black Heritage Trail could look like in the city of Hastings. So we were the lead on that project through the MNHS Legacy, the Heritage Partnership Program, and we identified what a Black Heritage Trail through the community could look like. And in that project, they've identified, as you can see on the screen and as well as your handout, different areas that could be potential regions or sections of this trail. So we have the residential area, looking at where a lot of the African-American community members lived, along the riverfront, and how that played a role, as well as some of those businesses. And then, again, down on the bottom corner here, having the Laduka State as part of that with the George Daniels exhibit that will be going in there as well. And we did just submit another Heritage Partnership Grant to take this concept plan and start moving it towards implementation, and we applied for another grant through the National Trust that would allow us to do a lot more research with the Daniels and Black Heritage Trails kind of combined because that history overlaps so much. So with that, turn it over to Ryan.
Yeah, so last year, we held various events at the site. So we hold teas various times throughout the year. We serve tea, we serve a slightly modified menu that the family served to some of their guests, as well as Civil War Weekend. We hold in early September, candlelight tours, which focuses on the spirituality of the family and kind of that Halloween season. This year, we started a new event, the Winter Solstice. So we put up some Christmas lights, had a fire, had people walk around the site at night, and then we did a couple partnership events. So River Town Days kickoff was held at Laduke with Merchants Bank and some local businesses as well, and then we also worked on the Fourth of July parade. And so coming up this year, a lot of the same things we're going to do, the kickoff again, have concerts in the park, which is photographed here, excuse me, concerts in the orchard, we're going to do Civil War Weekend again, of course, and we are starting a new event. It's kind of a cooking demonstration slash class based off of recipes from the family's And the tour season at the Laduke is going to be starting on May 15th. You can register for those tours online at the DCHS website. They're $10 for adults, eight for seniors and veterans, and then six for children six and up. And the, yeah, the tour's going to be starting here in a little bit.
So with that, again, we thank you for your time, and we will open it up to any questions that you might have for us.
Great, thanks, guys. Council, any questions? Council member Verachov, I knew you would.
Thank you, mayor. Well, I have to ask, I mean, I think this is a burning question nobody else is asking. How did Laduke and historic work get a partnership with Walmart for this upcoming event? Can you tell us about that? And for what it's worth, I completely support this. I think the more that we can make history accessible to everyone, the less likely we are to repeat it in theory, and so if going to Walmart is the best way to reach people, so be it.
Yeah, so Hastings Walmart is undergoing a renovation, and they'll be having an opening for that on, I was at May 23rd.
Yep.
And as part of that, they were looking to try and build kind of some community with that, and so we met with the, and I don't know her exact title, but something about the regional marketing for Walmart, and they mentioned how when they were preparing for this, everyone kept saying "history in Laduke," which makes sense. So they reached out to us and said, would you be interested in participating in this event? So we will have reenactors on the grounds from the Civil War, potentially some fur trade reenactors. We'll have our history trunks out there, so we take, usually take these to schools where we have kits that students can touch and try stuff on, so it's the fur trade in Civil War, so we'll have those out there. Additionally, you know, like I said, the reenactors, but also have some history panels that as people come through and talk with the reenactors or volunteers, they'll be able to learn a little bit more about Hastings history and the Laduka State.
Awesome.
It is awesome. Thank you so much.
We're really fortunate to have this beautiful building in our, in our community, and I do think that tours are up, and I love to see people when I drive by and I see cars everywhere, and I just, I think we're really fortunate, and you're fortunate to be able to be our, be their leader, so.
We have the fun jobs.
Yeah, you do, for sure. Lot of great events throughout the whole year, and I've heard nothing but good about the tea and the solstice and, you know, the many things, so that's great. Thanks for your work.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You bet. Council members, I would wonder if there's any corrections to the minutes from the first regular meeting and of March 3rd? Okay, seeing none, they are approved. Comments from the audience at this time? We will hear comments from the audience. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time, please step forward, state your name and your address at the podium. Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Okay. Council members, I do have an addition for the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to add the sidewalk cafe license renewal for the American Legion Post 47.
So moved.
And the DNR.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The DNR Mississippi River Bolt Watch. You're using version two, we kept changing this.
And the DNR Bolt Watch.
Both of them.
Council member Pembel?
Please.
And council member Verachov? Any discussion, council? Okay, clerk, please call the roll. Sorry. Council member Beck?
Aye.
Council member Lawrence?
Aye.
Council member Leifeld?
Aye.
Council member Pembel?
Aye.
Council member Verachov?
Aye.
Mayor Fassbender?
Aye. That motion prevails. Council members, consent agenda, adding these two items, along with these two items, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move, your honor.
Council member Lawrence and council member Verachov? Clerk Murchoff, please call the roll. Council member Beck?
Aye.
Council member House?
Aye.
Council member Lawrence?
Aye.
Council member Leifeld?
Aye.
Council member Pembel?
Aye.
Council member Verachov?
Aye.
And mayor Fassbender?
Aye. That motion prevails.
Tonight, under awarding contracts, we have the 2025 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements, and we will conduct a public hearing, council, along with a resolution to order the improvements and adopt assessments. For this item, we have an introduction by our city engineer, Cody Matheson, and followed by a public hearing and potential action for the council. Welcome, Cody.
Good evening, mayor and council. Little on-air production meeting here, so I'll let Dan get this pulled up. While he gets that pulled up, my coworkers are going to be so proud of me that I printed something, because I am the digital age, like, through and through, never print anything, but I have my slides here if I needed them, so. Well, thank you, mayor and council. Tonight, we are here to discuss assessments for the 2025 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements. Just a reminder, we were here last month talking about the public improvements, so the actual scope of the project. So tonight, we're just going to be keying in on the assessments themselves, so, Dan, if you could advance the slide. So here's just a quick reminder, hit this last time, the streets we're going to be working on are Reconstruction Streets, shown in red, First Street, Farm and Fraser Street, as well as State Street, our Reclamation Streets, shown in green, being Farm Street, or, excuse me, First Street, west of Farm, First Place, Olive Street, and Prairie Street from Third to Highway 55. Next slide, please. So how do we go about determining assessments here in the city of Hastings? So we start by having a third-party independent appraiser conduct a special benefit analysis. And what that special benefit analysis does is it determines the anticipated benefit for each property type based on what we are doing to that given street and the anticipated benefit that will take place because of the project that we are conducting. So that report provides that benefit for each property type, each improvement type, and combines them, and generates a list of recommendations that staff is able to evaluate to start working off of. So based on our ordinance, staff then takes those recommendations and establishes a per-lot rate, which is 90% of that anticipated special benefit. So again, taking that recommendation from the independent appraiser and using our ordinance to turn that into a per-lot rate, and the special benefits analysis provided that in a by-lot. Corner lots in the city of Hastings get given a break. So if you are fronting two streets, you are assessed 100% or the normal assessment on your short side, and then you're given a break, only assessed 25% on the long side if you have that dual frontage. This per-lot methodology is consistent with what we've been doing back in 2023, 2024. It is supported by our ordinance and has been supported by our operations committee as the most equitable way to disperse these assessments. Next slide, please. So what do our lots look like here in the 2025 project? We've got 103 lots in total. 90 of those 103 lots are single-family residential, about .2 to .4 acres on average. We've got five institutional properties highlighted by Alina Hospital, the YMCA, as well as Regina Senior Living, all on the north side of First Street there. We've also got a couple apartments, a duplex, some twin homes, and one agricultural parcel on the west end with the Kinzemius Farm, so a little bit of, little bit of everything on this one. But looking at those varying sizes and shapes of those single-family residential lots, again, keying in on that majority, the 90, that per-lot method, again, with that unique sizing and shaping of all those lots, that per-lot method really does a nice job equitably dispersing our assessments. Next slide, please. So putting together that special benefits analysis that we got from our third-party appraiser, applying our ordinance, discussing that with our operations committee, here are the rates that the project is recommending. On our Reconstruction Streets, for our single-family homes, that would be $7,200 per lot. On our reclaims, that would be $6,000 per lot. The other rates you see there for some of those institutional properties, those are all based on recommendations that were provided in that appraisal report. You can see, for example, Alina Hospital, Regina Senior Living, YMCA, the clinic, those are larger rates, those are based on a highest and best use analysis, looking at comparable sales from within the city of Hastings and the greater region, looking at essentially the land area and other multitude of factors that play into that larger assessment for those larger land areas and different uses. Next slide, please. One nuance that the memo touched on in your packets was this block of State Street from Third to Fourth. So this block was partially reconstructed in 2006. You can see I overlaid here in yellow what that 2006 project looked like. It was primarily a project on Third Street that also absorbed that block of State and then a block of Prairie Street, but when they came through in 2006, they did not replace the original sewer and water. Since 2006, we have had two water main breaks in that block alone, and this winter, we just had a third one right near the intersection of Fourth and State. Ultimately, because it was improved earlier, that block was not in the original scope. We talked about this at the last meeting, but staff brought forth the recommendation, Ops ultimately supported, let's go ahead and include that block in the project. It makes sense to do it now and take care of that concern. Because those streets were, or the residents along that street were assessed just 19 years ago, and we expect a 30-year life cycle out of our streets, we worked with, at the time, city attorney Corey Land, to look at how can we properly address that fact. So we looked at our ordinance, and our ordinance ultimately gives us the flexibility for unusual conditions to modify the proposed assessments, and we determined that this fit that case. So what we're doing for residents of that block in particular is prorating the assessment, essentially acknowledging that their street only lived for that 19 out of 30 expected years, so they'll be getting a break on this assessment. So we took that standard $7,200 rate, took that fraction, 19 over 30, to get that prorated assessment, again, reflecting that 11 years of expected life that that roadway didn't quite get because we're coming back there. Real quick reminder of the overall project cost, just over 4.5 million. Approximate breakdown shown graphically there, and then, Dan, if you could advance the slide, what we ultimately like to hit on with our assessment hearing is, sometimes a misconception with this project, is that it's 100% paid by assessments. That is ultimately not the case. For this particular project, assessments will be making up 16% of that total project cost. Next slide, please. So going into the actual payment of our assessments, so payment for assessments will be accepted starting September 1st of 2025. No interest or fees will be incurred if the assessment's paid in full by October 31st of 2025. Partial payments are accepted, so if a resident wants to put a little bit of money towards the assessment, any amount remaining thereafter will go and be certified to the county property taxes, and that'll begin a 10-year payment plan that is all baked into their county taxes, and the first payment for that would begin spring of 2026. There is an interest rate associated with that financing. Historically, it's been at or below 5%. We don't know what that rate will be right now until the city finalizes its bond sale, so we're just stating approximately 5% at this time, but that rate is still ultimately to be determined. Next slide, please. So what does a, what does a sample assessment look like for our standard reconstruction lots on a $7,200 assessment? Assuming that no money is paid down, the entirety of that assessment is put towards the county property taxes over 10 years, if we estimate an interest rate of 5%, that would result in an annual payment of approximately $916 or a monthly payment of about $76, again, if fully put onto the 10-year financing program. We do have financial aid available. We touched on last meeting the fact that our Community Development Block Grant program is funded through HUD, and that's ultimately federal grants. We did receive some positive news today. I actually just spoke with Dakota County CDA today, and it's looking like we will receive some new funding for 2025. So that is positive news. However, that is just speculation at this point, but it is a step in the right direction. They think that if we do receive funding, it's likely to be a little bit smaller than we anticipated. The second piece that I wanted to share, in conversations with them, we did come to learn that we have a remaining past balance that is essentially those block grant funds that have not been used in the last couple of construction years, those actually carry over. So there's more or less two pots of money, and assuming that one or both hopefully remain unpaused by the federal government, we can look to try and tap into one or both of those with the project. Ultimately, just don't have that finality right now, so more information to come, especially by July, when we're actually going to send information out to our residents, we're going to have a lot more clarity by that point, but just wanted to share that snippet of good news since we have it. It's looking a little better than the last time that we were here. Eligibility for that program is income-based. Applications will be, when the applications mailed in July, it'll hit on that eligibility criteria, and the Dakota County CDA ultimately reviews those applications. That's not something that we review here internally at the city. So that review will determine if one qualifies for the full abatement, the entirety of the assessment, or potentially a partial abatement if there are funds left over, after all, the fully qualified abatements are paid. Next slide, please. The last- assessment, or potentially a partial abatement if there are funds left over, after all, the fully qualified abatements are paid. Next slide, please. The last program, and last slide that I wanted to hit on here, is our assessment deferral program. So this applies to senior citizens, those who are disabled, military personnel may be eligible. And then there's also an additional qualification requirement that the first year's payment must be greater than 1% of your adjusted gross income. So what's shown there is that same sample assessment, what the income requirement would need to be at or less to qualify for the deferral program. This program does have applications when it's certainly a good tool. However, we do like to really highlight here, this is a deferment. This does not forgive the assessment. This assessment would be due in full upon the sale, the transfer, transfer, excuse me, or change in deferral eligibility status. So we really want people to know that that assessment will live with the property and continue to accumulate interest if it is deferred. So just important distinction between the abatement versus the deferral program there. And there's more information that will be mailed on both programs when we send that out in July. With that, that's the end of my formal presentation, so Mayor will stand for the hearing. Are any questions?
Thanks, Cody. Council, first I'll open the public hearing, and then we'll have discussion after that. This time I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to the council at this time about the assessments? No one in the audience? Anyone on Zoom?
There's something clear.
Would you, if you're on Zoom, would you please raise your hand so we could see that you would like to speak to the council at this time? No action. Okay, one more time. Anyone wish to speak to the council at this time? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Open discussion for council. Councilmember Leifeld.
Thanks, Your Honor. Cody, can you, if this is a question that you can't answer, I completely understand, but people, obviously, social media, people talk about all the things that they want to ask their city, but they're not calling to ask about, right? So can you explain it all? Some people were concerned and making comments about why are we having homeowners pay assessments on the streets? What do other communities do? I mean, because as you pointed out, great graphic, right? This is 16% of the total project cost that's being paid in assessments by the homeowners. It's really quite small, but for a homeowner, $7,200 is an awful lot of money. Can you, is this something you could kind of speak to?
Absolutely.
To explain to me?
Yeah, Councilmember Leifeld, it's a great question. So special assessments are something that are extremely common throughout the state of Minnesota. Statute 429 outlines the process by which cities can follow to levy special assessments. I think it's an important thing to note that for the city to acquire the most competitive bonds that we seek to get, we are required to assess for a portion of the project costs. And there's some more specific financial requirements in there, but specifically, the city is required to assess a minimum of 20% of the, in our case, our street and storm sewer improvements. Our sewer and water portions of the project are funded through our enterprise funds, so as rate payers, when you're paying your sewer and water bill, that is generally paying for that component of the project. But we have to see and try to get at least that 20% threshold assessed so that the city can secure the best municipal general obligation bonds possible. And again, that's that statute 429, very commonly leveraged by all of our surrounding cities. You know, City Attorney Burkeness, if you have any other expansion on the 429 process that you'd like to outline for neighboring communities that might be helpful?
Sure, thank you. And I can confirm, Councilmember Leifeld, that all the other cities I represent and many other cities here in the metro for sure do road assessment projects like this and assess the cost to the owners. And I would say 16% is generally on the low side of what I see of the overall project cost being the responsibility of the homeowners.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, I appreciate the explanation. I just know, and even as a homeowner, right? We pay taxes and our taxes, and I know at different times of the year, we've got that pie chart that shows where all the taxes, the money we put in, where it all goes, right? So, and some of that is, is any of that going to?
And that, yeah, Councilmember Leifeld, I think that's probably the most common question that, the way we get it framed, right? I pay my taxes. How does this not pay for the roadway, right? And I think the distinction there is that the portion of your taxes that is going to roadways and street maintenance is just that. It's the general upkeep, your snow plowing, your pothole patching. You know, we do our mill and overlay program, which we're going to talk about here later. We are not assessing for projects like that, right? So we are still managing a lot of our pavements and our streets here in Hastings without assessing. There's a lot of our thin overlay program, right, that we have been expanding on and did three miles last year, not assessed. All those activities and all the other things that Public Works does in your road right-of-way, that is what that covers. These one-time capital improvement projects that are specifically benefiting the parcels adjacent, those are not accounted for in the general tax levy, right? So I think the short answer to that is, you know, are there other financial means where we could raise overall taxes or other things to make it so we weren't assessing? I think the short answer is yes, but it's generally more complicated than that, right? We would generally, we would need to generate that revenue somewhere else. So that by assessing for these projects, that allows cities to not entirely collect for it with the, you know, just the general tax rate, if that makes sense.
Thanks, Cody. That helps. I just was sort of, I tried to look for it to see if I could find it, but, you know, it was just kind of a general question, and then people coming on board, giving their two cents worth, and it's like, you know, this is really a good question, right? Where does our tax money go compared to assessment fees? And then, as you indicated, we expect 30 years.
Right.
Out of this assessment, right? And congratulations, I mean, excellent job with the houses that were assessed, because there was a lot of conversations about that. They had an assessment 19 years ago. So thank you for taking that into consideration. And at the same time, with that pipe burst and things like that, when the fire trucks get to your house or your neighbor's house, you want that water pressure there, you want that water to come out those pipes. And I think now this sort of ends the piece of us, of our old infrastructure under the streets, is that right? I know that's been an ongoing project of getting rid of this.
Cast iron.
Old infrastructure and.
It's a, yeah, that's a good point as well. It's a, it's an ongoing effort with our capital improvement program. We've slowly but surely really been in this gritted area of Hastings. Even before I arrived, there was a lot of projects done here. There is still portions of, you know, cast iron, older things, because some projects, like that 2006 one, from limited funding, they didn't do anything wrong with that project, right? I want to make that clear. They had a choice to make, just like we always have a choice to make. We have to balance what funds are available. If that road was falling apart, and that's all they could afford to do, so, you know, that's the choice they made. So to answer your question, Councilmember, there still might be some, you know, and we know that there are cast iron pipes kind of scattered throughout, but they're on our radar, and we are going to continue targeting them until, until, to your point, they're all gone. And then we will continue to plan diligently to replace those on the lifecycle they need.
Thank you, Cody.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Thank you, Cody. Councilmember Verichoff.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. I think that is a really important question. I think it's a good one to raise in a forum like this. It's fair. We serve at the will of the people. It is the role of good government to serve its community. And I just wanted to publicly thank our Public Works Department. There seems to be, at least from my perspective, an enormous amount of thoughtfulness and planning that goes into relaying these projects that we know are sizable in assessment amounts. But the emails that go out, the notification of the public meetings, the postcards that you then send to homeowners. I've went to a couple now of open house or open forums that you have, where the engineers simply sit up at a table and say, anybody that lives in the community, come, talk to us. What's your concern about your driveway? What kind of questions do you have? And so I just want to say that I'm incredibly thankful to the thoughtfulness that you and your team and Ryan bring to this work. Even today in the presentation, where you talked about different opportunities for grant funding, different ways that people could finance these costs. I agree with Councilmember Leifeld, these are not necessarily smaller amounts, but these are important payments that we have to make to sustain our city into the future. One of the things that I know that this body has said quite often is, we want to make sure that we're being really thoughtful going forward and that we're not kicking any proverbial cans down the road. We want to make sure that for councils that come for years after us, that they don't have any mess from us to clean up. And so this, to me, feels like a really good example of using our resources in the right way and a good government. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Verichoff. Any other comments, council? Okay, if not, I would accept a motion to adopt the resolution, to adopt the assessment for Project 25-1, 2025 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements. Councilmember Leifeld?
Second.
And Councilmember Verichoff with a second. New discussion, council? All those in favor of the council? Sorry. Oh, sorry, yes. Clerk Murtaugh. Come on. Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember House?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Aye.
Councilmember Pembel?
Aye.
Councilmember Verichoff?
Aye.
Mayor Fassbender?
Aye. And that motion prevails.
Also, Cody, we have a resolution for receiving bids and awarding contract for the 2025 Mill and Overlay Program, $1,033,424.85. And to also approve the change order, number one, for the 2025 Mill and Overlay Project, $54,936.14.
Thank you, Mayor.
You may continue.
Yes, so council has requested to award the contract for our 2025 Mill and Overlay Program to our lowest responsible bidder, who is OMG Midwest, Minnesota Paving and Materials, kind of a mouthful there. But what this project is going to address is pavement on Fourth Street, right behind Walmart, and Featherstone Road, west of Pleasant Drive, 16th through 23rd Street, between Pleasant and Westview, as well as High Point Court and North Ridge Court. So we received five bids on this project, with the low bid being from OMG Midwest, paving materials at $1,022,424.85. This cost tracks within the 2025 budget, and we sort of have a paired item here right after it, as you mentioned, with the change order. But we'll go ahead and address this item first with the award of the contract, staff recommending that council move forward in adopting the attached resolution, awarding that contract.
Thank you, Cody. Any discussion? Now I would accept a motion to adopt the resolution awarding contract for 2025 Mill and Overlay Program and change order number one to add the three cul-de-sacs in the program. Councilmember Pembel?
So move, Your Honor.
And Councilmember Leifeld has a second? Any discussion, council? Clerk Murtaugh, please call the roll. Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember House?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Aye.
Councilmember Pembel?
Aye.
Councilmember Verichoff?
Aye.
Mayor Fassbender?
Aye. And that motion prevails as well.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, just was, my bad on the communication on, just wanted to clarify that that second piece, you know, because those bids were favorable, we are able to complete that change order still well within the project budget and still have contingency left over. So I wasn't sure if we were going to go through one item and then proceed to the next, but just wanted to make that clarification and actually verbalize that about the change order. So, thank you.
Thank you. Also receiving bids and awarding contract for, oh, sorry, that is not you. Thanks, Cody.
Oh, give me a hand.
You took the hint. Tonight, we also received bids and awarding contract for the Lake Isabel Park project. And for this item, we have an introduction from our Parks and Rec Director, Chris Jenkins. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Yes, very exciting, the Lake Rebecca project. Again, this is a LCCMR grant-funded project at a grand total of $1 million. We did receive bids for the, I'm going to call it the developed recreation area of the Lake Rebecca project. We have two separate contracts. One that's currently happening right now is the habitat restoration, kind of outside of what we all think of as Lake Rebecca Park. This deals directly with Lake Rebecca Park. Some of the elements of this project are removing the old parking lots, replacing them with new parking lots, same places, smaller parking lots, because we don't have the same kind of use in that area anymore. The very back parking lot that is used for snow storage, we're not touching that, right? It's going to be a continual spot for snow storage, no reason to sink funding into that. This will pull the old wooden bollards out of the way, it'll replace that with giant landscape boulders to define the parking areas. We'll redo some of the trails that are in there. We do have to redo those trails as they are, because we are in floodplain and we are around wetlands, so there's a lot of rules and regulations that go along with that. We will replace the mowed turf area by the large parking lot there with native habitat, so that'll reduce our maintenance costs in there. We will mow some paths through there, put strategic picnic tables and those sorts of things in there as well. It will, we are adding a section to the fishing pier down there, and we're going to upgrade the boat launch into Lake Rebecca Park a little bit. But all of those things are going to be part of this project. We did open six bids in the middle of March, and we had a low responsive responsible bidder that both our consulting team and myself discussed the project with. So we were confident in the schedule that they submitted. They did submit a fairly aggressive schedule, but we all think it is very doable, which would put the project done about the early part of June, which is before our current June 30, 2025 completion deadline. That is the grant funding completion deadline. We do have an extension request into the LCCMR that currently sits in a Senate bill that has seen no action for quite some time. So if we don't move ahead today, and if we don't have the project completed by June 30 of 2025, we may not get a project if the legislature doesn't act. So what we're asking tonight is for council to approve this project, it's a little over 511,000, almost 512,000, and get the Ashwell companies going. And I suppose I should add, if there is some financial risk, and Dan and I have talked about this, if on June 30, that contract is not completed, work done, the city then has the option to pay the bill to continue and finish it. Again, contractors are very confident, by June, early June, the project will be completed. On our side of things, we have also lowered the water level in the lake to try and absorb any bounce with spring runoff, thankfully not a lot of snow this year, or spring rain events. So we're currently holding the water about two and a half feet lower than we normally hold it, so we can take some bounce. Right now, that still is about a foot higher than the Mississippi River, but we can't actually dump any more water out of the lake just because of the structure that's there. So what we're asking for is to accept the bids and award the contract to Ashwell Companies. And I can stand for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Leifeld?
Thanks, Your Honor. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached cooperative agreement.
First motion? Motion's on the table? Second, by Councilmember Lawrence. Now discussion, council?
And then I'd like to ask Chris a question.
Okay.
So that back lot, obviously, why fix it, right? You just put snow in it. Is there a way to, like, close that during the summer months, just to keep traffic out of it? As a person who toots around on their scooter and ends up in places I shouldn't?
During the summer months, Councilmember, we have used concrete jersey barriers.
Okay.
To keep vehicle traffic out of that.
Perfect, thanks. That's what I was acquiring. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Councilmember Leifeld. Any other discussion, council? Clerk Murtaugh, please call the roll. Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember House?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Aye.
Councilmember Pembel?
Aye.
Councilmember Verichoff?
Aye.
Mayor Fassbender?
Aye. And that motion prevails.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing things started and cleaned up.
Me too.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure you are. All right, under administration tonight, as always, the first meeting of the month, we have a PFAS update from our city administrator, Dan Maticia. Not that we never talk about PFAS, because it's all we seem to be talking about, but Dan will give us another update.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll see if I can keep up, since we just had a workshop prior to this regular meeting, and some of the details might have changed. So hopefully I caught them as we went. Really just focusing on what's new in the last month, not trying to recap everything over the last couple of years. The project cost estimate for all three plants is $68.9 million, but it is expecting to trend higher. And as we saw earlier this evening, the first plant, the central plant, is expected to be about $3, $3 million higher than what we were estimating it at. So expensive project. Even with the assistance that we've secured today, several grants, partial funding through the East Metro 3M Settlement Fund, we're still expecting water rates to increase 158% between 2024 and 2028. So it's an expensive project for our residents and businesses. Counsel, as I know, very much appreciates the impact on our people and is looking at how to minimize that by seeking additional funding, by reducing some of the costs, by spreading out the costs that we have to carry. But it's still a sizable burden. One of the sources of funding that we were hoping for is community project funding or congressionally directed spending, essentially a grant through the federal government. We had been on the shortlist for $1 million, but then in mid-March, a couple of weeks ago, Congress, when they adopted their continuing resolution, it included no community project funding across the country. So ours was wrapped up in that. We are in process of submitting a new application in the next week to support the Western Treatment Plant. So we'll come back again every year until we can't. But seeking that funding. Another source of funding is the Drinking Water Revolving Fund, which is a low-interest loan. And just on the central plant, assuming we go forward with that, which is one of the discussions we had during our workshop, that by itself being low interest will save about $1 million in interest payments over the next 20 years. So certainly being cognizant of where we can save some money. Water rates, as I mentioned, we had the workshop earlier this evening, although obviously no decision at a workshop, and water rates would be handled through an ordinance at an upcoming council meeting. At the first of the year, when we did a 10% increase in January, we said, as we know more about grants, as we know more about cost estimates, about 3M settlement, we would likely do another increase at an amount to be determined July 1. And coming out of our workshop this evening, it looks like that'll be another 10% coming up in the 1st of July. Other part that I know came up in various conversations I've had one-on-one and with community members, it came up with a meeting with neighbors of the central plant and at our workshop, is just recognizing that the environmental investigations are ongoing. And those continue. We hope that other wells will find a connection and eligibility for funding through the East Metro 3M Settlement, but those take time. And I do think it's worth noting that they are continuing to do that investigation. Last couple of updates are on the central treatment plant itself. We, earlier this year, had done a Phase II environmental assessment, and it came back not identifying any impacts, requiring further action or additional investigation, which was very pleasant and good news, welcome news. The construction documents will include a contingency plan that if there is some unidentified contamination found during construction, that the contractor would need to deal with it. But it's certainly getting the, sort of the clean bill of health, allows the project to continue. It did not add additional delay and certainly did not add additional costs. With that out of the way, completing our due diligence, we are scheduled to close on the purchase of the property for that site next week on April 18. We have been, multiple conversations with the two businesses at this site, Carboni's Pizza and Stacy's Stars. They have been given a 90-day notice that they need to vacate by June 30. And SRF Consulting has been assisting them with relocation analysis, and that continues. We had a very good meeting with Stacy's Stars this morning. It looks like they're progressing towards a new site, and we are meeting with Carboni's tomorrow, and I hope that also would be a positive meeting. At present, we anticipate final design completed and ready to go to bid by May next month. So this project is moving ahead, and construction could begin as early as July. So it is moving forward, and we'll see some regular items on our agenda as we move forward with financing with that low-interest loan, or sending the bidding documents out, or those contracts when they come forward. So it's moving. The other piece I want to note is, last week, two weeks ago, on March 25, we held a public presentation about the central treatment plant, as well as the raw water lines running from Well 7 to the new plant. Although it was open to the public, and I know we had a few residents from elsewhere in town there, it really was geared towards the neighbors. What's it going to mean living in a construction area? And wanting to be able to answer their questions, it also proved to be a very good opportunity for them to give us some feedback about the project. And I know our engineers have taken that into account and made some adjustments already. That presentation, not at the moment, but it will soon be posted on the city website, as well as other updates, so that we maintain our commitment to public information and transparency. But with that, I know there was a lot there, and there will continue to be more, but I can certainly take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Counsel, any additional discussion? Counselmember Leifeld?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to add to that, Dan. What a lot of information, right? We just sat through a workshop on this. And I did want to mention to the community as well that the central water treatment plant on the North Frontage Road, which is the one Dan is referring to, that could start as early as July, we will be looking into a filling station of sorts for residents. Just keep that in mind. Yes, it's a ways out. It would be looking at next, fall of next year, but that would allow you to get drinking water that's been treated and has had the PFAS removed prior to all three of the treatment plants being opened, at which point then we will, you will have that in your home. But in the meantime, know that for everyone who's wondering, you know, what are we doing in the meantime? This is the quickest fix we can have, and we're looking at something next fall for that. So keep that in mind. So thanks, Dan, for that great update.
Counselor Leifeld, any announcements, counsel members? Yeah, I have a few. We recognize this is National Library Week. And next week is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. We thank those institutions for their services to our community. On Friday, April 18, we will have a ribbon cutting and a volunteer tree planting at Lake Isabel in honor of Arbor Day. Meetings Wednesday, April 9, 6:00 PM, Arts and Culture Commission. Thursday, April 10, the HEDRA meeting has been canceled. Monday, August, I'm sorry, April 14, 7:00 PM, Public Safety Committee, 7:00 PM Planning Commission. Tuesday, April 15, 7:00 PM Heritage Preservation Commission. Wednesday, April 16, 6:00 PM, Parks and Recreation Commission. Thursday, April 17, 6:30 PM, Public Safety Advisory Commission. Monday, April 21, counsel, we have a workshop for, and it's a joint meeting with our school board, and a 7:00 PM council, our regular council meeting. With that, I would stand for an emotion to adjourn. Counselmember Counselmember Lawrence? No discussion. Clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember House?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilmember Leifeld?
Aye.
Councilmember Pembel?
Aye.
Councilmember Verichov?
Aye.
Mayor Fassbender?
Aye. And that prevails, and we are adjourned. Thank you.